We'll just do it the next one. I don't think it's critical. Hey, do you have somebody coming? Are you live?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody ready?
Yeah.
I'd like to call the Oglesby City Council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Aldridge?
Here.
Eunice?
Here.
McDermott?
Here.
Steph Nolling?
Here.
Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number four. Public comment on agenda items only. Seeing that they are none. Next up, number five, approved minutes from September 5th, 2023 city council meeting. Any questions, concerns, or modifications? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll approve the minutes for September 5th, 2023 city council meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Eunice?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nolling?
Aye.
Aye.
Number six, approved bills as presented for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $588,469.20.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Eunice?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nolling?
Aye.
Aye. Number seven, approve September 15th, 2023 payroll in the amount of $52,415.15.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Eunice?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nolling?
Aye.
Aye. Number eight, updated personnel policy. Okay, so what this is, is, uh, let me see here. So, we had a personnel policy that was, I think the last updated version I see of it was, uh, 2016, I believe is what I see. Let me pull my copy here that I have. Yeah, December 5th, 2016 is the last time it was modified. So, one of the things we've noticed is there's a lot of things that's in our collective bargaining agreements that is kind of silent on. So, what we've done is we've tried to update the policy to have a location where some of these things are addressed. We did a draft of this a little while ago. We kind of went around and talked about it. We did send, it has a first look at the, uh, the labor attorneys. They chopped up a lot of stuff. They chopped up a lot of stuff that was on the previous one as well, made some recommendation, and then it came back to the council. We've been kind of sending it around a little bit. The vast majority of all the words we put in there, um, we agree upon. There is about five items, though, that there is some disparities on. So, I think we're going to see if we can resolve that tonight. The only other thing that's not in there that the labor attorney made me aware of, that we talked about briefly, was we don't have anything in there yet about the, um, part-time people, uh, getting, uh, vacation stuff. So, if we can get that in the next one, uh, when it gets updated, we should be covered for that. So, I, right now, there's two of them out there that, uh, there's one that Commissioner Eudes did, and there's a version that I did as well. So, I guess I should ask, how would you like to do, would you like to address the items that we have some disparity on? Or how would you like to go about that?
I think it's pretty, pretty clear that the biggest difference, the way I see it, is, um, Jason's version empowers the mayor to be involved in the discipline process for the departments. And my version keeps the commissioners in charge of the discipline within their departments. That's the biggest disparity there is.
I don't know if I agree with the wording of that, though, but I would agree that that is probably the biggest one. There's two items. There is section nine that talks about, um, the maternity leave and a personnel policy. I truly believe that we need to negotiate that or come up with something like that with a side letter agreement before we put it into a personnel policy. And the big one is under discipline. The version that Commissioner Eudes has, um, empowers the commissioners to specifically state that the commissioners can, can terminate solely on their authority alone without referring anything to anybody. Uh, and my argument with that is, state statute says this. Under 65 ILCS 5/4-55, "The commissioner of each department, however, may be vested by ordinance with the sole right and power to appoint and discharge the heads of all principal departments subordinate to the department of which he is the commissioner." So, my understanding of that is, is when any time you have something that's specific like that, you would have to adopt it before it becomes a factor. So, right now, the city of Oglesby does not have that. So, I don't think it's, having a policy that has it in there is technically legal.
Could you give me that, uh, ordinance number again, please?
The ordinance, it's the state statute.
Oh, state statute.
65 ILCS 5/4-5-5, from chapter 24, paragraph 4-5-5.
Let's go through five, yeah, six of them.
I do believe that it-
I have that in front of me.
I do.
I do believe that what you're referring to has a, uh, more of a reference into the police and fire, respectively. Not our departments.
I'm just reading you what it says.
Well, doesn't all this go before the labor attorney anyway to review? So, if we're in violation of statute, wouldn't, wouldn't somebody with a law degree be able to pick up on it?
Well, yeah, but you want, you want to send something to him where you, you truly believe the commissioner should have the sole authority to terminate employees?
Well, it's state statute the way I read it right now. That's how I read it, that the commissioners do have the sole power to do that. If you look, and I read, uh, from section 4-5-6 of the 65 ILCS, "All officers, assistants, and employees of each department specified in 4-5-2, except those elected or appointed, as provided in sections 453 through 455, shall be appointed by the commissioner of the department to which they are appointed and may be discharged by him when, in his judgment, the efficient conduct of municipal affairs so demands." That's pretty clear to me.
So, what about the one beforehand where it says, because it says you have that, it has to be done via ordinance?
Well, I think we did that during our first council meeting. By ordinance, we gave everybody their oversight. And now that's consistent with what I see in the state statute.
I don't think that any of the ordinances we did, Tony, say anything about the sole right and power to appoint and discharge, uh, the ones that we did. But I think this is something you should run by the labor attorney, and I think you should look at your ordinances and come to some decision about whether you can do it or not do it. And that's what you're paying for.
Well, I think there's another thing here, and I appreciate, you know, I appreciate the advice, Pat, always. But if you look at the state statute and then you go into our municipal code, every commissioner that has oversight, it's explicitly stated that they have oversight of their department. It doesn't say in consultation with the mayor or anybody else. It gives them that oversight. Unlike an aldermanic form of government where it gives the mayor the executive powers and then the alderman the legislative ability, this is a different form here. The council has the executive and the legislative power, not just the mayor having the executive. So, I think that, I think that has to be taken into consideration, too.
I would agree with that assessment, Tony, but obviously we've got to follow the statutes. So, we need to know whether commissioners have ordinance authority to do this in Oglesby.
And I don't, and just to clear the air here, as far as I see it, um, I've always said that I'm going to keep an open mind about this because I've read both of these policies that are being presented to me. I don't think anybody here is going to discharge somebody without going through the steps that are in the labor agreement. You can't just fire somebody. It's not quite that easy because then they go back and they file agreements. And then at that point, something has to happen. So, I, I think, I think the notion, all I'm saying is, the point I'm trying to make is the notion of that any commissioner sitting here at this table is just going to go and outright fire somebody, and it's going to go that easy, that you're just fired? I, I just don't buy into that, and I don't think that's-
Well, you do have some employees that probably aren't covered by a labor agreement either.
Not many, but a few.
Yeah, you do. So, you've got to keep that in mind, too.
So-
I would argue they have due process.
They do have due process, but I just think, you know, when it comes to, you know, this, this wild notion that somebody's just going to go in and just say, "You're fired, get out of here, you're done," and not have to go through the disciplinary steps. You have four people here that have been part of a labor union at one point in life. I think we all understand that.
But that's what the policy says, though. So, but by saying that, I don't think anybody here would abuse that and do that. That's, that's problematic for making a policy that allows that.
Well, Jason, we have two, two different, um, personnel policies on the table. We can debate it all we want, but I think we're at an impasse, like I said to you before. So, why don't we make a motion to get one through?
What about the other minor ones, though? There's three other minor ones.
Again, the lawyer's going to look at it, Jason. This is your, this is your legal opinion, which you don't have a law degree, so I think we need to have the labor attorney look at it.
Okay.
And I'm pretty sure that this is going to be amended as time goes on. Yet again, when all this other stuff comes up for the part-time employees and the vacation stuff that we're going to be obligated to give them. So, I don't think this is going to be over tonight.
So, is the recommendation that we're going to make a motion to send this to the, the version that you have done up to send to the labor attorney for review?
Well, I don't know if it's going to be mine or yours, but whatever one we, we pass, I would, I think it's on here explicitly.
Both of them deserve an up or down vote.
It goes to the, whatever one we approve goes to the labor attorney to review to tell us if we're compliant with ordinances and state law.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
We can, you know, you want to send both or just the one?
I think just the one we approve.
Okay.
I don't want to pay anybody or two of them.
What's your concerns about section 10, number six, section 10, number four, and section 12? Because there's some things that you had excluded from the errors that I think, doesn't affect me, but I think it helps you in your departments. The vacation line that says, uh, added, uh, part of the department head that has, if it gets approved via the commissioner, uh, because that was a problem that we were encountering, encountering. In section 12, when it came to the, uh, employee reviews, I made it to where the commissioner has the opportunity to be involved in the review process and not necessarily required to be present.
Yeah, I stand by the version that I presented for consideration, Jason.
Okay. Any other thoughts on any of those other minor items, then? Okay. If no concerns, then, um, I'll look to take a motion to send, I believe, Commissioner Eudes's version to the labor attorney. Is that what I'm hearing? What people want to do, or is there any other, any other discussion on the topic?
I'll make a motion we send yours to the labor attorney, Jason.
Do we want to vote on which way we want to go with it before we send anything to the labor attorney?
Send both of them, actually.
I mean, it doesn't make sense to send one and then incur costs, then potentially send another one. I think it's probably beneficial if we decide which way we want to go here and then send it to the attorney.
Let's put them both up before the council and see which way the votes go.
Whatever you'd like to do, that's fine. Or if you want to piecemeal them together.
I don't have interest in that at this moment.
Okay.
I just think it's only fair that you give them both an up or down vote, and at least this way, you know, nobody could say, "Hey, mine didn't get a vote," or anything like that, so. All right.
I'll entertain any motions.
I make a motion we send Jason's version to the labor attorney.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge?
This was for Jason's version, did you say? Uh, nay.
Eunice?
No.
McDermott?
No.
Steph Nolling?
No.
Yes. Any other motions?
Do we want to make a motion to send yours?
I would like that, yeah.
Well, then.
I'll make a motion we sent, we sent my version to the labor attorney.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Eunice?
Aye.
McDermott?
No. I think they voted.
Aye.
No. Three to two, motion passes. All right, next up, number nine, seek bids for Malik Substation upgrade equipment. Commissioner McDermott, do you have anything you want to talk about this?
I don't think he does, but I'm late.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. I was thinking-
We had, uh, in the past, the transformer for the Malik Station has been purchased. Two-thirds of it has been paid for. We're waiting upon its arrival. In the meantime, our electrical, uh, engineers have sent us a paper with, uh, about, close to a million dollars' worth of different parts that we'll need to implement this out at the Malik Substation. At this point, we're looking to send them out for bids. One good thing is that our, uh, electrical superintendent thinks he's going to be able to do a lot of this work by himself without paying the extra money for a, uh, overall engineer to watch over everything that they're doing. So, uh, it should keep the cost down quite a bit. At this point, I'm just looking for the authority to send this out, seek bids for the Malik Substation upgrade equipment.
If I remember right, when we had the, the big transformer for, uh, Phoenix, we did a lot of in-house work as well that kept the costs down. I think this transformer, though, is larger than that one that was purchased, though, so. Any other questions, concerns over that? Want to make a motion, then?
I'd like to make a motion to seek bids for the Malik Substation upgrade equipment.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Eunice?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nolling?
Aye.
Aye. Number 10, purchase of high-service pump for waste, uh, for water treatment plant. My apologies, that's Commissioner McDermott.
Yes. Okay, guys, we, I'm seeking the approval to purchase a high-service pump for the water treatment plant. We have one installed already, it's working fine, but we need two of them, okay? The cost of this is $22,500, all right? Okay? City actually needs it, so.
Okay. Have a requirement, so.
Yeah, it is a requirement. Uh, okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of a high-service pump for the waste, for the water treatment plant of $22,500.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Thank you.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Eunice?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nolling?
Aye.
Aye. Number 11, cellular provider cost estimate.
Okay, so, uh, Illinois Valley Cellular, um, we've talked about this in past meetings about, uh, looking at another provider. And this month, uh, we looked into Verizon, and they're running a special that goes up until the end of the month. And right now, we're paying $805 a month with Illinois Valley Cellular. We'd be at $839 and possibly less than that with Verizon. Our coverage would be better, and, um, you know, all the phones and stuff would be upgraded, uh, with no additional cost. So, it's something that would be a recurring contract because it's a monthly expense. So, I, I, I wanted to kind of put that in the hands of the council and see what you wanted to do about that. You know, we shopped it around, and this seems to be like a good deal. But the thing is, is we'd have to take advantage of it before the end of the month because that's when it expires. So, if we were going to take any action, it would have to happen tonight. Otherwise, we would miss out on this deal that they're offering. So, if you guys have any questions or if there's any thoughts you have, otherwise, if not, I think we should probably go in that direction. I mean, we'd be getting a better product and, for basically the same money and maybe even a little less because there's some devices on here that it seems like we can probably reduce down, so.
Do you know how much it actually is, or?
Yeah, $839.82 a month is what it would be. Right now, we're paying $805 a month. And from what I understand, the service that we're getting isn't quite as good, you know, reception and stuff like that.
Okay. Any other discussion on it?
I think another good advantage is you get a free phone with that as well, which that's a huge benefit.
Yep.
Because usually you might be spending eight, nine hundred bucks per phone and financing that out over five years.
Okay. Well, I think if we get approval for the estimate tonight, it'll give us what we need to, to go ahead and get it before the end of the month, then. Can I get a motion?
So, I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve going with Verizon for our monthly services.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Eunice?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nolling?
Aye.
Aye. Number 12, sewer check valve program. So, if you take a look at your, your packets, somewhere here it is. There is, again, we, we talked about this a little bit, but inside the packets, it actually has, uh, a draft ordinance. This ordinance was drafted up in March of this year, but, uh, you know, we didn't approve it, so, so now it's in front of you there. The, the other sheet is the example sheet from LaSalle. The one thing that's not in the packets is LaSalle's actual ordinance. If you look at what, uh, patented up in March, it's almost the exact same as theirs. The only difference is, instead of us having a cap of 10,000, it's a cap of 4,000. So, the general concept of it is, is people that have proven that they have a sewer backup of some sort in their home uh, within the last two years can, can basically get a 50%, uh, up to 50% paid for if they want to improve their home with a, with a check valve to their sewer line. Any thoughts on that, questions, concerns?
Is this just a trial run here? It looks like, uh, only two residents would be able to go about doing this.
There's been at least two residents in the last two years that have had a, had a problem, that is correct. So-
No, but I think Richard's question is-
It's $4,000.
-to see how it works out for the first year.
Well, the, the question-
Which I think was the point.
Yeah, the-
It started on that road.
The, the question, I think, that originally came up is if there's more people that wanted to take advantage of it, how do we do that in the first year? I, I think it's a, it's a good thing it's, it's persistent every year. I think us spending the $4,000 to help out residents that are, that are unfortunate enough to have something like this happen is a, is a benefit that we can provide. But I'm willing to listen what people think about that.
And there's, uh, if I'm not mistaken, there's residents that's actually have done this. Do they have any concerns?
So, full, full disclosure, there is, so there's two residents that, that would be interested in doing something like this. And I have actually talked to two residents that have done something like this on their own in the past, and they were not happy about if the city would come up with a program like this just because they had to pay it all out of pocket on their own. So, just to make you aware of that.
But we're looking forward.
We're looking forward. That was, that was previous administration, so I think this is something that, that we can do that can really make a benefit in somebody's life. Uh, one of the, the people that had something terrible happen, it actually happened to them twice.
Need to try to help.
Thoughts? Obviously, we can't approve it tonight because the version we have is still the old version, but we'd have to, if you wanted to update it, we could, we could, uh, obviously approve it at the next meeting. Or if you'd like to have some more discussion over it, or what do people think?
I'd like to talk to the people that did it on their own dime first and get their opinion or, or their understanding of it. I don't think up here I'm in a position to make a move on this without actually hearing the, from the people that have had an interest, so. I would like to hear from them, and then I'll, I'll give you a position one way.
I can give you, of, of one of them I do know who it is, I cannot remember the second person that did it in the past. I want, but I can give you one of them, at least, so.
And maybe the people who are interested in doing it now.
Yep.
Yeah.
Give you that. That we can, that, that I definitely have contact information for.
I, I'd just like to hear from them and, and get a better understanding from the resident.
Okay.
And this, you know, will improve the city value of the properties as well.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that?
I'd like to hear from both.
I had it happen to me once at my old house, I can tell you it's not fun. So, I, I deal with these people who have had it happen, and I understand people who have had it done in the past be a little jaded, but that being said, we weren't sitting at this, this table when that took place. So, we're just looking to move forward with it. I think it's a good program.
You know, when it did happen, there's a lot of actions we took to try to make sure the lift stations won't have those kinds of problems again and stuff. But, I mean, no matter how much planning you do, there's still going to be some kind of problems that happen in the future.
Look at that, a huge rain like we had before, that's when mayhem strikes.
Yep. Any other thoughts on that? Anybody want to move forward with it, or do we want to?
I'd like to make a motion to table the sewer check valve program until we get more information from residents.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Eunice?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nolling?
Aye.
Aye. Number 13, TIF 6 expansion to include downtown area. So, a couple weeks ago, we had our annual, uh, TIF report that was done here. And, uh, Herb Klein represents us as our TIF attorney. And I know we've talked about this a little bit in the past when it came to our facade improvement program that we just came up with a new one. And I remember stating that if we wanted to continue it after this year, we'd have to find a way to fund it by coming up with, uh, like something from the general fund or things like that. After the meeting concluded, I talked to, to Herb, and he said, "Well, you have a couple options. You can just keep doing what you're doing right now, and the TIF ends, and, and that's that." And I thought that was pretty much our, our given plan of attack. So, the other things you could do is you could create a new TIF, TIF 7, which would be just for those downtown areas that you want to take advantage of. Problem with that is it's a brand-new TIF. The tax, the taxing bodies are less likely to be on board with that. And plus, if it's a lot of businesses that aren't doing modifications right now, you're not going to have any increment in, in the first place. The other option was, TIF 6, you could amend it to include some of these other areas. The advantage of that is you'd already have the funds in there from the TIF 6 that we get from the other things already. And the taxing bodies are less likely to object because you're, you're grabbing something that you already had. You know, they're going to get the new increment for the, for the TIF 1 that, that expired already. So, after, I think I talked to the commissioners one-on-one. Uh, I'd like to pursue this option. If we want to do this before the end of the year, though, I do need to get something over to the TIF attorney so they could start with the paperwork. Any thoughts on that?
So, TIF, TIF 1, whatever the balance is in there, would roll into TIF 6?
That is correct.
If I, if I'm understanding it correctly, and then we can amend TIF 6 to include this downtown area.
The only real downside to it is that means the newly added stuff will not have the maximum duration of the TIF. They'll absorb the TIF, the duration of TIF 6, which, instead of having 25 years, it'll only have 20 years left on it. But it just came out of a TIF, and I think we got this new program. It's been pretty effective on getting some new business in the downtown. Plus, now that we've expanded the distance that we can use with this facade program, I think it would be a, a good idea. And I'm not talking any of the residential areas. These are, these would just be for the commercial districts that we have along Walnut and, uh, and Columbia.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion on it? If I can get a motion, then, that we'll, uh, send over to the TIF attorney, um, possible TIF 6 expansion to include downtown area.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Eunice?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nolling?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'll send something over to Herb Klein's office tomorrow on that. Uh, number 14, request from Starve Rock Runners to hold turkey trot. This is obviously a great event they do every year, and I still see no reason why we would not, uh, want to do it. Got a request in from, uh, Robert Steele.
My partner.
Your partner. Conflict of interest.
Are you going to be in the turkey trot?
No.
Why not?
I'm going to have too much fun right now.
Okay. I was going to put a wager on you, but, all right.
But Bob will.
All right. Any questions, concerns, continuing that?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Eunice?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nolling?
Aye.
Aye. Number 15, old business. Again, I'm not sure why it's an old business here, but it, it doesn't really matter. Maybe it's just because we dealt with it in the past. Place bids for Clark Sewer separation and Clark and Hickory culvert replacement projects on file. Today, um, there was a bid opening for both sets of projects. Uh, place bids for Clark Sewer Separation and Clark and Hickory Culvert replacement projects on file. Today, um, there was a bid opening for both sets of projects. Um, did you want to talk about it, Mr. McDermott?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right. Um, so there was a total of three bids for the culvert replacement that came in and one, two, three, four, five. Six bids that came in for the sewer separation, uh, project. I do not have a recommendation from the, uh, from the engineers yet. They, they're going to, they haven't had a chance to review all the packets, obviously, to make sure that they hit all the, uh, the wickets and requirements and everything like that to give us a recommendation. But I think it'd be good if we can at least place them on file today from the bids.
I would, I would really like to put these on file.
Yeah. And then I, within, I think if we get them on file now, we'll have that recommendation in from the, uh, from the engineers and then we can, uh, you know, award, uh, award the bid possibly at the next meeting. Any questions, concerns about that? Not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to place the, uh, Clark Sewer Separation and Clark Hickory Culvert replacement bids on file.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Albert?
Hi.
Udis?
Hi.
McDermott?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Next old business item. I added this, uh, because we had a little bit of confusion at the last meeting. I wanted to discuss and/or review how old business and new business sections are utilized. During the last meeting, um, there was a topic that I wanted to talk about. I think it was actually under new business. And, uh, Commissioner Baldridge, uh, put out point of order. So I wanted to read what a point of order is. A point of order is a powerful demand from a single member that can highlight violations of an organization's rules. According to Robert's Rule of Order, uh, when a member thinks that the rules of the assembly are being violated, he can make a point of order thereby calling upon the chair for a ruling and enforcement of the regular rules. Takes two forty-seven. So technically, when he did that, he wasn't wrong, right? Um, there can be any kind of violation for rules and at the time his, his, uh, concern was that it was something that wasn't on the agenda. However, if you look back to when we talked about new business and old business, it's my understanding that our, our body has, has talked about that is even though it's not something we'll take action on, that it's something that if somebody wants to discuss a new item or an old item, they can bring that up. So I didn't want to get into it then, but here we are today. I want to see if we can get a ruling on what we think that this body says when it comes to new business and old business. How do we want to treat that?
I'd like to speak on that because, uh, at that time, I, when you decided you wanted to talk about it, I had originally placed that onto schedule on the agenda and, uh, wasn't prepared. I believe I have that right. If I'm not prepared to bring a subject in front of the public, I have the right to say, "Hey, I don't want to do it." And I withdrew my, my petition to have it on the agenda. So I was quite confused, as you said earlier, that there was confusion. The only confusion was probably on myself as to why you decided to talk about it after I had asked to have it removed from the agenda.
Okay. Anybody else? My thoughts, so my question isn't about that. My question is, um, if somebody wants to talk about something and it's not on the agenda, do we believe that is an appropriate place for old business and new business items or no?
According to Robert's Rules, uh, we should be calling unfinished business as well, just to let you know.
So.
I think this was all part of the confusion that led to the whole agenda ordinance.
Yeah. So what he's referring to is under members' rules, um, I mean, this is very old stuff, but it does talk about the order of business shall be as follows. Roll call, reading a minute's reports, which we don't do it in that order. Communication from the local board of improvements, we don't do that either. Petitions and communications, that's an option. And then it says unfinished business and new business and adjournment. Those are the only things that are required. Um, we could rename it to unfinished business, but I think it's just been old business for a while there. I don't have a problem with that. But the new business one is the one that we added, um, for this administration because it is in the ordinance and I think when that came out, we talked about that, is it doesn't necessarily have to be an item that's listed here. The point of that is if the commissioner had an item that they wanted to at least discuss, maybe something came up on, on that Monday. It's not on the agenda, but they could talk about it. I believe that was my understanding of what was stated, but again, I want to see if we can clarify that here today. Anybody have any concerns over that or they want to change that?
I, my understanding is that, now I'm removed from this. I think this is between you and somebody else, but I mean, I, I, I guess if somebody asks to put something on the agenda and there's new information that's coming through and they don't have all their information, I, I, I think it's reasonable that the person could say, "Take it off the agenda. We're not ready yet. I'll, I'll put it on for the next meeting." I just don't understand why it got to a point where it became adversarial or confrontational in any way. I mean, I just, I, I think it's, it's reasonable for somebody to say, I mean, I give Commissioner Baldridge credit that, "All right, I don't have all the information that I need just yet, so take it off and we'll put it on for a future meeting." I just, the part I don't understand is how it got to this point.
Well, I'll be honest, that's going to be the next item I put on there to talk about under new business, about the removing of items on, on the, the agenda. That's not what I'm talking about here. The question, and the reason it does pertain to you is because I want us to set the rules going forward. So in other words, if there's ever a point in time in the future that you want to talk about something under new business and it's never been discussed before, if somebody calls a point of order that they don't want to talk about it because it's not on the agenda, if that's the established rule of the body, I'm going to, I'm going to hold that point of order.
I don't believe you're, you're projecting that correctly here because you're trying to say something that just out of the blue comes up. What, what you're actually talking about is something that we've all been talking about for many months. Uh, we just now had it. I had asked at that time to remove it and it was because I was unprepared at that exact time. This isn't something that just happened to come up and like, holy cow, we have to, we have to take care of this right now. Um, we need to get it on the agenda. We didn't have time with that forty-eight hours. You had plenty of time to also put that on that agenda. And if you wanted to speak about it, you had that time.
So I'm going to say you're incorrect in what you're talking about, right?
Oh, absolutely.
The reason for that is, it's, it's not to be offensive. The reason that is, is because earlier that day I had talked to, uh, Commissioner Udis and he said, "Hey, I got some stuff." I don't know if it was that day or maybe it was on Friday. Uh, said, "I have some stuff I'd like to put in there to make a modification." I said, "Oh, it's already on the agenda. We can always table it or, or go from there or whatever." So I was fine with not talking about it the night. The concern I had was that something was removed from the agenda, that, that the agenda was already posted as final to everybody. That's what I wanted, but you kept on saying point of order. So I didn't want to push the item. That's the reason I'm talking about. So, so that's what I'm trying to establish here. How do we want to follow this? Because we, we can't be going left and right and of center. We got to stick with the same set of rules. I want everybody to play with the same set of rules. Are we only ever going to talk about items that are on the agenda and agenda only?
I, I thought that was the ordinance and statutes that, that said that we were only able to talk about things on the agenda.
That, that, my understanding was that was how the whole agenda ordinance came to be was that, eh, eh, there was an argument of whether it was going to go on there or not. So then we, we had to clarify that. Now, I guess my understanding is, is since we have that in place, okay, if you want to talk about it, put it on the agenda.
Okay. So from this point forward, if it, if it's not on the agenda and somebody wants to talk about it, we're not going to talk about something. Is that correct?
Wouldn't that be consistent?
If you read up on that.
Unless it's in closed session.
Closed session's a different story. Yeah, I get it. But for publicly speaking, is everybody, if, if that's the standardized rules, we'll go with that.
I think we should go with what's in writing and not, not try to
What is in writing?
Something. Well, actually, what's in writing is that you have to give the public forty-eight hours to come and address it as well. Um, I don't think that's fair to the public for us just to pull something out of a hat and say, "Oh, tonight we have some new business."
Well, that doesn't, that doesn't mean that if, if you want to talk about something that we're going to vote to approve.
As a legal matter, I think you can talk about whatever you want to talk about in the meeting. You can't take action on an item that's not on the agenda.
Correct.
So there's a difference between talking about it and taking action.
So that's what I want to make sure that we establish tonight then. Are we going to say, because again, the other, the other item in this is, you know, E is the one we talked about, Robert's Rule of Order, except when otherwise provided by law, shall govern all questions of problematic procedures. The next one says, "These rules may be altered, amended, or temporarily suspended at any time by vote of the council." So that's what I'm asking for here, is what are the rules that we want to go by?
Robert's Rules of Order and our ordinances.
Well, our ordinances are very vague when it talks about can we discuss it. We just heard our attorney say that we can discuss items.
But you can't take action on it.
That's fine.
And my opinion is, is that if something is discussion-worthy, I want to take action on it. I don't want to just discuss it to discuss it. I would rather discuss it with the potential to have to take some action. Why would you handcuff yourself?
Well, because like you said, the public's not aware of what you're, maybe it was an item that didn't get put on the agenda, so they're not aware of what you're speaking to. So that's the reason.
So then you put it on the agenda.
Okay. For whatever reason, it doesn't get on the agenda.
Or it may come up, Tony, the day Friday and Monday. And you might want to discuss it and then take action on it the next meeting maybe if it's.
We, we also are afforded the opportunity to hold a special meeting if in case something like that were to happen.
You absolutely do.
Okay. So I just want to make sure, we don't have to take a vote on it. I just want to make sure I have clear understanding because that means the next time, let's say Commissioner Udis says, "I don't, it's not on here, but there's something I want to discuss." And somebody says point of order, I'm going to say, "I'm afraid it's not on the agenda. I have to sustain what he's saying there." Is, is that what everybody wants? I just want to get a consensus, like a nod or something from everybody? That's how we're going to do business going forward?
I agree to follow Robert's rules as we agreed to earlier.
That is so vague because
I agree with
I'm, I'm asking for clarity here.
I agree with Mary.
So if you look, point of order is not for debate. It's up to the chair to decide. So I'm asking
Well, then the chair can be appealed to. That's what I'm saying. It's Robert's rules. We've had this conversation where if you want to, if you want to do Robert's rules, this can work both ways. So you can decide how you want to do that too.
I can assure you there's no difference.
Second required. No. Is it amendable? No. Is it debatable? No. What vote is required? Chair rules. Can it be reconsidered? No. May it interrupt? Yes. It is not one that can be appealed by the chair unless you have your specific body rule.
We didn't say it would be appealed by the chair. We said it would be appealed by the council.
So, so in other words, you, all I want is clarity on what you want to vote.
I think it's clear. I mean, there's books written on this. There's, there's clarity. It's just the matter that we need to look it up and, and find that clarity.
So I gave you an example.
You also gave me an objective to read up and study this and I have. And I believe that it covers nearly everything. There's, I believe, six hundred and seventy-eight pages. I believe that it covers nearly everything we'd ever encountered.
So I'm giving you a specific example. How would you like that handled? Commissioner Udis brings something up that's not under new business he wants to talk about?
As I stated very clearly, we also are afforded the opportunity to have another special meeting for anything that would come about that wasn't on the agenda.
So are you telling me that if Commissioner Udis says he wants to talk about something and you would come in and say, "Point of order, that's not on there. Let's make a special meeting to talk about that separately." That's how you want that handled?
I believe all this, all the things that we go to encounter are already included in Robert's Rules of Order. So I would like to handle it as we all agreed to at the beginning of this, to abide by Robert's Rules of Order. Yes. That's how it should be handled.
All right. Well, that's clear as mud.
Well, if you can't understand it, I can't help you. There's a book to read.
I gave you an example.
You got your card. We got our cards. You're not really giving me an example. I've told you, but you're not listening to me. We have an opportunity to turn around and put it under a special meeting. You're just, you're trying to push through your way and it's not going to happen.
I'm trying to give you a real world.
You're not though, Jason. You keep pushing forth saying, "Oh, it's muddy. It's muddy."
I'm giving you a real-world scenario.
Okay. We should move on. I, I would like us to move on from that one. We'll, we'll do it.
Not resolved. Anybody else want to talk about that subject before we move on? Okay. New business. Discuss removal of items and posting a final city council agenda. So we had a thing last, uh, meeting. We're at twelve oh one P M. The final agenda went out. Um, and then apparently sometime after that, the agenda got modified. Um, we did talk about how we had, that anybody can add things to the agenda, but we never really talked about how things get removed. Is it, do you think this is something that we need to address?
I think it should be common sense.
You, you would think.
Well, again, I mean, if Commissioner Baldridge asked to put something on the agenda and then he goes to ask to remove it, I just can't understand where there would be a dilemma with his request. If it's beyond the forty-eight hour rule and if we want to stick to the forty-eight hour rule, it would technically be seven o'clock on Friday night, not, not, not noon.
Saturday.
Saturday. So be it. So I, I guess all I'm getting at is, is that if a person wants to put something on the agenda, well, now they have the right to put it on the agenda by ordinance. If they want to retract it off the agenda because they don't have whatever they need or, or, or they have other information coming in and they want to wait, I think that's a courtesy to the whole group here. Otherwise, we're just up here talking to talk and we don't have everything available. So I think when you have a conflict, I think then it goes to whatever the majority wants. If you have three people saying they want something on the agenda and two people are saying they don't, well, guess what? Three people are going to see the day. There's no reason that they should be turned away.
The, the problem is though, it came off the agenda without us being aware of it. Because if I would have known at twelve oh one that it's getting removed, then I would have said, "Well, then I want it on the agenda and then I'll add it." Because I was ready to talk about it two weeks ago.
And where would it have gotten us in the end? We talked about it tonight. I mean, you, you basically, it's, eh, eh, I don't think there was any loss from it. There was nothing suffered from it. And it was probably better, better off that it got pushed off.
So let me put, let me give you another real-world example here. All right. So let's say I put something on the agenda that I know you guys really want to talk about, right? Because remember, you guys changed the, you guys changed the ordinance that gave you guys the right to put things on the agenda. So let's say I put something on the agenda that I know you guys really want to talk about. And then at four twenty-nine P M. on Friday, I go, "You know what? Pull that item. I don't want to talk about that anymore." So you guys were expecting to talk about that, but I pulled it right before the end of the day and now I played a dirty game.
And I'll play, I'll play a game and I will put a special meeting on Tuesday or Wednesday at the first available opportunity within forty-eight hours notice for us to discuss it. There's your game.
And I would think if it was something that the group really had a desire to talk about, I think that the city clerk would receive multiple email requests to have it on the agenda, just like she has in the past for other things, like the attorney or the agenda.
Told not to do that, don't remember.
Doesn't count. So.
I, I, I think if we're going to be modifying the agenda, I, I think on, on Friday, I think it needs to come back out with, uh, with something that states, "Hey, this got removed. This got added. This is an additional modification." That needs to happen. Would everybody agree with that?
I'd say this is a dynamic document, just like everything else. You know, minutes rolling, you know, after Friday and, and sometimes ordinances. And I get it. There's a lot of things on the agenda for all of us. So I mean, for this to be something steadfast and hard, I mean, it's, I think it's an understanding, no matter what town or city you go to, that agenda moves pretty quick from day to day, week to week. The only time that it remains solid is that forty-eight hour window. So.
If somebody puts something on the agenda and there's somebody else that wants to talk about it, maybe they should say, "Yes, I want that on the agenda as well."
Yeah.
Some clarification. That way you got two people. If one person takes it off, the other one says, "But I still want to talk about it."
That was kind of my understanding. So it was surprising to me when something got removed and nobody knew about it. That, that's my concern.
My only legal advice would be that once the agenda is posted publicly, I don't think anything should be removed from the agenda. I think if you convene on Monday and somebody doesn't want to discuss that issue, they should make a motion to table it and
Hundred percent. As we have.
Otherwise, I have no legal advice as to how you settle your decisions for what goes on the agenda.
Okay.
So you're saying, instead of removing it, make a motion to table it?
Correct. Once it's been posted. If the agenda has been posted publicly, I think you should stick with that agenda until your meeting and then deal with whatever your issue is then.
Just for clarification, the document that was posted for that agenda last week or last meeting, was that posted without the personnel policy on it? When you posted it to the public? Okay, so.
It was posted.
It was, but it was posted correctly.
It was posted correctly, but what was told to us, what was on there was not, was not the same. That's, that's my argument with that. So, okay, moving on. Um, seventeen, public comments over any topic.
I have to, uh, comment about, uh, when an employee has the right to terminate, uh, an employee. I, I'm a, I'm a little bit confused. Say, Mr. Baldridge decides to terminate somebody. He's got the final word. That person is terminated. Am I correct? That's the way that ordinance is going to go?
Well, it's, in all fairness, it's not an ordinance. It's a, this would be a personnel policy that would, uh, address items that's not addressed elsewhere.
My next question is if the employee is a bargaining with an employee, does he have the right to grievance?
Yes, absolutely.
I spoke to that.
Yes.
Who's at the grievance meeting? Just the commissioner that terminated?
I'll answer that. We have not yet assigned negotiating teams for, for the city, but that will be forthcoming at some point, Dom.
It's not a negotiating team. Who is going to be? Who's going to hear the grievance or the dispute?
Whoever we assign as a negotiating team for those departments.
And I would think that the attorney would be involved too.
Yes.
If we're going to be completely on the up and up about it.
And if the employee is a union member, he's entitled to union representation?
Of course he is.
Absolutely.
That would be a, a firm requirement that you
That's already in his contract.
That would be his choice. He can either have somebody or not have somebody. It's, but he gets ultimate say in that.
Now, now it is. To follow up what Dom was talking about, initially, the exact words you read and then amended by Tony that, um, there'd be the, the grievance committee, but you made your hard-line wording, made it sound like you could fire the person and then it will, the city will deal with the consequences, um, in the legal means of improperly terminated person. So I'm going to say, I'm going to drop that and let it work itself out with the labor relations legal team. And as far as new business, old business and unfinished business, as long as you don't, uh, act on it and other than discussing it, I don't understand why you're hogtying yourselves to not be able to talk about anything at that point in time. It's almost like right now, I can bring up anything I want to talk about right now and you have to listen to me. Um, and you're all, unless there's a legal reason that because you're in those seats, um, you can't talk about it unless it's on the, uh, official announced in the agenda, which really seems to hogtie your hands, uh, to be able to talk about something that's come up that people have been chatting with yous in each of your departments. And I guess that's, as far as, um, are you going to get around to the, the burn ordinance, uh, that, okay?
I realize I forgot to update that on under old business, but it wasn't on the agenda, so.
Well, now it's in public comments. You can talk about it. When you get to your, each of your individual positions, I guess when each of your assigned spots comes up in your, each of your commissioners and the mayor gets the last word, um, I guess you could talk about your unfinished, un-agended, new, old and business then. That's it.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Uh, Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Stephanelli.
All right. So, uh, the recent ordinances that, uh, we passed will appear soon in the online version in the municipal code. Um, I, I know we're going to have muni code sometime soon here, make the update, so that'll be reflected. Um, I had talked about, uh, switching us over to a tablet for our, uh, agenda here and for our packets. So, uh, what I'd like to do is, um, hear from the council what you prefer as far as a device, because I know we have two Android users and one, two, three, four, the rest are all Apple users. We can do it either way. I can, if, for somebody who prefers an Android, I, I, we can get him an Android device. It'll perform the same function. For somebody who prefers an Apple device, we can go with an Apple device. So I've looked into it and I, I, I leave that up to you folks here and, uh, whatever you want me to do with that, I'll, I'll go with it. But I'd like to do it sooner rather than later, so. That's all I have. If, if, if somebody wants to give me some input on what kind of device, otherwise I'll, I'll make the decision for you and next, next meeting you can, you can have my decision on it.
iPad, please.
Okay. Becky? Apple device?
Apple.
I'll go with Android or Apple, doesn't matter.
Android device?
That's fine, whichever, doesn't matter for me.
Well, if you're an Android phone user, it might be easier for you to use that, I'm just trying to give you the courtesy.
I got both, so whichever.
Okay.
Whatever makes it easier.
Do you have a preference?
Whatever's cheaper.
Pat, do you have a preference?
I'm an Apple user.
Okay, fair enough, I got what I need, thank you.
Thank you much. Commissioner Udis.
I was recently sad when I listened and, to and read the article about the new dog park and, and disc golf. At no time was Commissioner Baldridge recognized for all of his time and effort he put into both of those projects. I for one want to pay him homage for the outstanding job he did with both projects, thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you much. Commissioner McDermott.
Okay, as, as a reminder, the EPA with cross connection surveys, I'm hoping everybody's turning those into the city. Also, we have the hydrant flush, as a reminder, will begin on October second and through October sixth. Residents may experience low water pressure or a rush color to the water. You are suggested to run the water to resolve this issue. Also, branch chipping will begin October sixteenth through the twentieth. And as a reminder, this would be a good opportunity for residents to clear their trees and brushes from power lines, streets, sidewalks, per ordinance twelve point twenty-eight point zero five zero. And, uh, the LEAF Act will start October twenty-third through November seventeenth. And, uh, good job on the park.
Thank you. I'd just like to, uh, follow it up, there were a lot of people involved in all those projects and, uh, I would like to thank every one of those individually, they've done a great job doing all that. Uh, it wasn't just one person. Another thing here, uh, we received a thank you letter from Dr. Blanco, there were some, uh, trees and problems down in his area and, uh, the electric department was able to go down there and, and fix those problems. He, uh, liked to say, thanks for fixing our drooping wires, we really appreciate it, have some donuts on us, and also supplied a gift card, uh, so, thank you, Mr. Blanco, for that. I'd like to thank Commissioner Udis and all the volunteers that sacrificed this past Saturday to make some great progress at the disc golf course. Eighteen volunteers in total, and the progress is much appreciated. The boots bruise and barbecue was a very fun time while it lasted. Unfortunately, we called it a bit early as they give the band an entertainment to pack up, time to pack up safely all their equipment. Uh, thank you to all those who put forth such a great effort to make this event happen again. Um, we're now looking forward to our Harvest Fest on October twenty-first. It's a great event that brings many people from far and near to our wonderful little town. We are Oglesby also is having their second annual scarecrow contest and invites businesses, individuals, organizations, schools, clubs, families to have a little fun, spend some time together, make a nice little scarecrow and, uh, place those downtown. There'll be a judging on those, I believe the commissioners judged those, uh, that evening. Just a fun little event and it's good to see it happen again. We, uh, look forward to everyone coming and enjoying themselves, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Mayor's Report. Just to echo what Commissioner Baldridge says, yeah, boots bruised and barbecue, uh, while it was going on, you know, Seneca Square was pretty much full with, uh, with people, it was great. Unfortunately, the weather, uh, you know, got cut a little early. Anytime you have an outdoor, uh, kind of event, you're kind of subject to that. Uh, Harvest Fest this year, uh, will be October twenty-first, starting at eleven A M., we'll have some more details to follow on that shortly. And the only thing I got was, we received a grant on Friday for the Strong Communities Program Grant, uh, for up to two hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's the grant that we've gotten in the past with, where we can utilize that to, uh, remove some of the abandoned buildings. I know of at least two that we're looking to, uh, to move that for. I don't know if we've ever gotten, I don't know the history of how much we've gotten in the past, but two hundred and ten thousand seems more than we've gotten before, so, um, that's all I got. Um, oh, I guess I'll make a mention of one other thing. Yes, the burn ban was supposed to be tonight, uh, that we were going to talk about. We, we got the ordinance in, but it didn't get in in time to get, to get on the, uh, agenda. So, my apologies for that. Um, I do want to correct one thing, I, I, I think there's a little bit of confusion about what we said here, maybe what was put in the paper. There should be zero effect on recreational fires. For those that do recreational fires, there should be no change to what we currently have. The only day you can't do that pays homage to, uh, Wash Day, which is Monday. What's being modified is the days that you can do, um, um, burning of your, uh, yard waste and stuff like that. That's being restricted by the number of days and then the times extended on the days that you can. But we'll have that on the agenda for next time. That'll be addressed as well, thank you. Alright, um, I think we don't have executive session tonight, unless there's a reason for someone to go to executive session. Okay? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Hi.
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 Hi.